30 seconds behind so wait for some approval. Yeah we're good now. We're good. Just start kicking in.
With you, the opening number SpongeBob musical.
We need to be prepared. That could play.
Chicken's on her nation. He's my father.
From the west, everywhere you go the skies are clear and sunny. But when you're in the future, it's all in the air. Not on the ground, till the tables are full of whatever. Back on the land, if I went to college soon, no worries.
You're the fallen man.
I think. That's beautiful work. All they get one love, right? Don't worry. This is Thomas. It's beautiful awesome. My baby's smart. My genius is immense.
Come on, tell me it takes forever to pick the top in the entire town.
This is what I'm here for.
Thank you.
See that money doesn't matter with you. How is that not a mystery? But your heart really beats on the way. In battle, there's always all my children to be fought in battle day.
There's nothing here.
What happened there was more.
Getting into. Oh. Get out. Oh. This. Oh. You're people. These people watching at home. Power. I can have all the love, the greatest, the best. You're the greatest, you're the one. We are free of war. We are the one. Thank you all so much. We hope to see you there this weekend. A lot of cool things to say. Do like the party though. Very much.
Thank you so much for all the job. Looking forward to seeing people. Everyone at home who might be in.
Stephanie Volmer. And it's our next thing is to buy. Together and make sure. Underneath one versus two. Two.
Fifth graders and they have been suggesting as well. So we're going to have two more events by the end of this year with ice and roller skating events and next level ninja. Thank you.
All right. Stephanie come. Yeah Ryan go ahead. Ryan you can go. Drive safe. Yep have a good night.
Hi everyone. Nice to see you. Stephanie Volmer, LPS PTA. Our, I'm happy to report that our sixth grade fundraising is also complete for the year. So I just want to thank everyone who came out and supported all of the events that the team had planned for this year. And a special thanks to the sixth grade parents who spearheaded the fundraising campaign. So we're happy to breathe a sigh of relief this early in school year and no car wash. The local book fair, which is a book fair that we're doing with Friends Town Bookshop will be the week of April 24th. So keep an eye out for more details about how that works. It'll be very similar to how it worked last spring. So just keep an eye out for details on that. Our walkathon will be in May. We have a date for field day, which is May 25th. Mark your calendars for that. And an end of year party planned for June 2nd. We have a meeting tomorrow night at 5:30 in the LPS library and would love to have as many people be there as can be there to participate. We've got a lot of planning to do for these end of year events. So it'd be great to have some parent support for that. We'll also be talking about ways that we can be, we the PTA and parents can be supporting teachers as they're packing up rooms and trying to sort of shut down LPS as we head toward the renovation. So hoping to be able to bring some support to that endeavor as well. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you. Janelle.
Hi everyone. Janelle Whipple from LAEF. Just wanted to give a quick update. So there is a grant you guys are approving tonight. There's a couple other things going on. Like Ryan mentioned, the Angeliette program was something we were very excited to fund and the feedback from that was really, really great. The grant you guys are approving tonight is also very relevant because we approved a professional production assistant for the school musical, which was something we were really excited to get the grant request for. It seems like it's the first time they've done it, but it seems like it's going over very well. Feedback from students and Mr. Vermaelker are good. So open to doing that in the future too. There is another one that you guys will probably see in a forthcoming meeting, but we were really excited about it. It did get approved at our last meeting. It's a STEM hovercraft project for fifth and sixth graders at both schools. And it's a national program where they actually get together and build hovercrafts and get to like, you know, launch them, float them, run them, whatever you do with them. So that's really exciting. We did have at our February meeting, we were lucky enough to have Andrew, Tony and Jeff come to our board meeting. And we're talking about how we can collaborate together closer in the future on signature projects for the district looking out to three years instead of, of course, we're always here to be in the moment with the grants that, you know, the teachers and admin need, but how can we look forward even more knowing that our district is evolving and changing? You know, LAF wants to be right there with you guys. And to that end, you know, we just, we really encourage teachers, administrators, even parents, board members, if there's suggestions for grants that, you know, you come up with that come from talking to your students, the teachers, suggest them, bring them in. We take suggestions from anyone. And it really, that's usually how grants start. It's just an idea from one person and we often collaborate with the teacher. We need a teacher to sponsor it, but it's very, very easy. So we're excited to do that. And the last thing and most important for us is the way we fund everything is through our fundraising. Our biggest event is coming up Saturday, March 25th. It's our annual auction and benefit. It is the 21st year that we are able to have this specific fundraiser. LAF has been in this since much longer, but the specific annual event's been going on 21 years. The location has moved this year again. It will be at the Union Fire Company in Titusville. They have a very nice location. We have, in my humble opinion, better, more creative ideas than we've had in the past for auction items. So I encourage people to attend. Bring your friends, bring your neighbors. Last year we had a ton of community members come that didn't even have kids in the school. So it always promises to be a fun night and that's how we raise all of our money that we love to put back in the organization. And the last thing I'll say, we're, you know, we're pretty good with auction items, but we are looking for sponsors in the community still. So if you know anyone who would like to underwrite an event, we would love the support to help pull off the event. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks Janelle. Thank you. So under item G for correspondence, we did have three letters that were posted on the, they're available with the agenda on the board doc site. There is no other correspondence other than that. Is that correct?
Correct.
And so we will move on to approval of minutes and I'll be looking for a motion to approve the minutes of the January meeting, the regular meeting and the executive session. Thank you Tracy and thank you Megan for the second. Any discussion on the minutes of that meeting? So all in favor? Aye. Is there anyone opposed? Okay. So now we have, we've got several reports. Gwen Thornton is online, and she's going to be doing a presentation for us on board ethics and also on strategic planning, which is something our district is going to be embarking upon. But we're going to ask, Ms. Canonis is going to come up first, and she's going to do a presentation on how we're going to be using the St. John's School in the upcoming school year while we're doing renovations to Lambertville Public School. So, Ms. Canonis?
So before you start, just real quick, Glenn, just wanted to give you a heads up. Because the weather is a little rough out there, we have one of our principals who's going to be presenting, and we're going to bump her before you, just so she can get on the road and head home.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Greatly appreciated. Again, my name is Wanda Canonis. It's my pleasure to be here this evening to talk to you a little bit about what it will look like to be LPS on location for the next school year and our process so far. I believe our agenda's coming up. And we'll be talking a little bit about teaching models, what it looks like in the basement, what will take place there, as well as the first, second, and third floor, a little bit about technology, recess, and parking. These are all important aspects for families, students, and staff. And here, again, if you'd like to take a look at it in the presentation, you can go to Google Earth and zoom in. Our new address will be 13 North Main Street. You can do that at your leisure. Some of you have probably already been there. If you have not, I would encourage you to take a look. We will also be offering other opportunities in the future. And when you enter the building or the parking lot area, just to give you a little bit about what you will see, that'll be for students, teachers, parents, any visitors, buses. You'll be entering through the parking lot. So past the church and into where the St. John's School was located, which will be LPS on location. There will be a landing when you first enter. When you first enter, the landing is pretty big. It's a very nice size. Our CSL will be located there. He'll be greeting students, staff, parents, any visitors. He'll be escorting as needed for safety reasons and also because we're still kind of getting to know this new layout of the building. With that, you will also see to the left, if you can visualize. That will bring you to the stairwell, and that'll bring you upstairs. You will go to the first or second floor. Third floor will really be for staff, and I'll get a little bit more into that, a little bit more into the presentation. Downstairs, you would go to the basement, which will be our all-purpose room. We really are excited. It is an unknown. You don't really learn about how to move a school in college. And that goes for the teachers, myself, or any of the admin that have been helping us with this journey. This really is new for us. So again, we welcome your support and any questions or anything else you have to offer. With that being said, I'd like to talk a little bit about the push-in model that we'll be using for teaching. This I am extremely excited about because it really is best practice. I'll focus on three. Those three teaching models will be team teaching, parallel teaching, and station teaching. There are actually five or seven, because there are two others that come from that five. The three that really we will be focusing on, which I believe are the most powerful, team teaching. That is when you have two teachers, two professionals. It may be a special education teacher, a general education teacher, or two special ed or two gen ed teachers. Ideally, you want to have a special ed and a gen ed. With that being said, the team teaching is done, so it is all seamless. You are finishing each other's sentences. You are all working on one objective. You are following through where the other one left off. Same thing with questioning and higher order questioning. And it's really a very exciting model. That can take some time to really get to an excellent level. I do believe I have some teams that are already headed in that direction, and they will just continue to grow and thrive with this model. This is really what's great for all students, not just students that have IEPs or certain needs. So I'm very excited about that. Another model is parallel teaching. That would be with two teachers. Again, same objective. It could be two gen ed teachers, two special ed, one gen ed, one special ed. They, again, are sharing that concept, that idea, what students need to learn. But they're delivering that in a different way. So one may be doing that in a more visual way. Another one may be doing that in a more hands-on way. That will be fluid, and that will really depend on student needs and teacher expertise. So again, another excellent model, which really should be good for all students. And the last model would be the station teaching. Station teaching is very exciting because you can also include paraprofessionals to help and support in that model. So you can have, again, gen ed teacher, special ed teacher. You can have two gen ed, two special ed. You can have paraprofessionals. And the students rotate, again, working on that same objective, that same level of instruction, but going through and really working with each of the professionals at every station. Again, another excellent model. We do practice and use a lot of these models currently at LPS. So I'm excited to really bring all of that to another level, which, again, is excellent for all students. As part of that teaching model, whether it's team, parallel, or station teaching, we will incorporate our support for ELA. We'll incorporate our support for math, ESL, and speech. Speech may look a little different because certain students do receive speech. So that wouldn't necessarily be a station model, but that speech person would be working within that classroom to support students as needed. So again, this is all very exciting. It certainly is taking some professionals and others a little bit out of their comfort zone, but everyone seems to be really on board, excited, and ready to take on this challenge. So again, just another plus for all students, truly. And if you continue to kind of join me with this mental visual, if you go in through the landing and you go down the stairs to the basement, that will be our all-purpose room. This is an actual picture of the all-purpose room. We will be using that for the gym. We will be using that for cafeteria, for PE. Depending on what is going on with health sometimes, most often, help would be pushed into the classroom. And this will primarily be cafeteria for grades one through six. Pre-K and K would be eating within their classrooms. And we also hope to have an AM breakfast, which will continue, which we currently have at LPS. And we also hope to have, and continue this as well, a more staggered drop-off time, which I can get a little bit more into as we continue on. But basically, parents would be able to drop off their children anytime from 8:05 until 8:30, 8:30 homeroom begin. So that will help a little bit traffic, parent needs, and also getting the students into the building, so we're ready for home. In the first floor, you will see pre-K. We will have three classes of pre-K. Pre-K does get maxed out at 15 students. We will have one kindergarten class, and that will be made up of two general education teachers at this time. We may also have a paraprofessional or a special ed teacher. Still working a little bit on the scheduling. But again, we'll be in really good place to support all student needs. We will have a first grade of about 23 students, general education teacher and a special education teacher. We will have one of the sixth grades on that floor, and the other sixth grade will be on the second floor. Our sixth grade is rather small. One will have nine, the other one may have eight to 10. And I say that because we have some families that may be moving out, or ones that I'm hearing may be moving in. So I'm giving you a general ballpark of numbers as of right now. We will also have our multi-grade self-contained group in that floor as well. We currently have four students that are in that classroom throughout the day. We have two students that sometimes get some support within that self-contained classroom setting as well. We will have out-of-class resource. We will have one that will be for grades five and six, and that's small group instruction. And then we will have one that'll be for grades three and four. On that same floor, we will also have our nurses' station, which is equipped with their own private restroom, a cot area for students that may need to take a little nap or are not feeling well. And we will also have our counseling office on that floor as well. And moving on to the second floor, here you will see second grade, third grade. For fourth grade, we will have two fourth grades. And that is really because of the number of students that we have in that group currently. Those teachers would like to own and master certain content. So one teacher will own LA and social studies, and the other for math and science, which is a highly qualified practice. So again, very excited about that and teachers that really want to take on that aspect. We will have one fifth grade, and that will also include our other sixth grade, which will also be on that floor, which, again, could be eight to 10 students. And that will really be all of the student classroom space. It will be the all-purpose room, the first floor, and the second floor. Moving on to the third floor, that will primarily be for staff. There we can have child study meetings, parent meetings, any kind of conferences that are needed. We will have a special area teacher's prep room. There is a nice-sized storage area there for special area teachers to keep their supplies and prepare for the next class or lesson that they may have. There will also be two other kind of open, fluid spaces for teachers that are gen ed, special ed, of special areas where they can have their lunch, they can have a little bit of a kind of fire rejuvenation time. And we will have a traditional teacher's room, which will have a refrigerator, microwave, and meatball if their needs that way. There's also a private restroom as well up there. Before I get into a little bit about technology, again, just to give you that visual, our special areas will primarily be pushing into the classroom. If you take a look at and think about Media Center Library, there will be carts on each floor with some age-appropriate grade-level books. We may also be taking some books to our local library, which is very exciting. And we may also have other folks coming into our building, as well as using more of a virtual aspect for our books that we often will access virtually. So I'm excited about that. With technology, I am also excited that we will use all of these items again once we return from Lambertville on location. And some of those items are the whiteboards that will be used for all of those models of teaching. And they will all be on wheels, so they can be utilized as needed. Same thing with the projector, our laptop carts, and all of that will continue to feel like. Recession and our playground area for pre-K, K, and one. We have a fenced-in area, which will be an excellent, I think, access for all of our students. Again, it is green, there is some grass, they can kind of run around in a more safe environment. And then our other students, we're hoping to have a Gaga pit, which, again, we hope to utilize and access once we return back from LPS on location, bring it back with us as well to utilize. We're also excited to be utilizing some of our more traditional games outside, like kickball, and fencing off that area and putting cones up and making sure that everything is safe. We also hope to take some other walks as needed and as they fit into our curriculum, like for PE. Ms. Burke and I had a great conversation today about sometimes accessing the field for some softball skills, et cetera. So again, another opportunity that will be there. And continuing on with recess, on to our next slide. Our PE teachers and paraprofessionals are very, very creative. I have complete confidence. We've gone through and kind of created a list of all kinds of things that can happen during recess, like pula hoop, pula tag, traditional jump rope, double dutch. We hope to get some football basketball set up as well. Our students love basketball. They also love to still do things like red light, green light. So these are, again, very traditional, but an opportunity for students to play some of these games that they may not have before in the past. And our religious symbol that may still be found at the St. John's School will primarily be covered or taken down. We are currently ordering some banners, some that pertain to character education, and also some that pertain to instruction as well. So again, everything will look, I think, as wonderful as it does at LPS currently, but really making sure that we're bringing that to the St. John's School as well. Parking. There are currently 65 parking spots. We really only have 50 at LPS, and that's counting the town parking as well. So we will have to share that. There is mass at 8:30 regularly. It will be on a first-come, first-served. There may also be funerals when there are. Hopefully, we will have a heads up. We do believe we will. We are also hoping to access the station parking lot, which is about three and a half blocks down. They have given us permission to use about 20 to 30 spots there, which will also help. I am also excited that we have at least a handful of staff members that can or would like to walk or currently do walk as well to school. So that also will help. Rollout to parents. This is obviously a huge, hot opportunity to be able to offer to all of you. We have picked out some dates that work, and we hope to be live. We hope to offer some virtual as well, where we can answer some more questions that may come up. I am excited to be working on a video with teachers and others that would like to help us with that, so that we can also bring the inside out to all of you, so that you can see that. And then hopefully having an open house or more than just one open house for parents to walk through the building. I have already gotten some teacher volunteers that are excited to begin working on their classrooms and setting everything up for that teaching model where they'll be working together. So we hope to bring that to all of you very soon. Any questions from the board?
Have a question?
I have a question about the recess. And I know that you've mentioned that there might be an opportunity for the kids to walk to the church, the Presbyterian church, for roller skating and indoor recess. One of the things I had asked about at one of our committee meetings was whether there was going to be an opportunity for the kids to walk down to the playground and be able to have recess outside in a larger area. So just, you know, that would be a question that I have, whether or not there would be time.
Yeah.
Okay. Wasn't sure how this worked, so apologize. I did want to do as much homework and research as I could, so I did reach out to the academy. They explained it as a good day or a challenging day. On a good day, it takes them about 12 minutes to walk from LPS to the academy. On a more challenging day, it can take 15 minutes plus. Challenging meaning students kind of have a meltdown, they don't want to walk, things like that that come up in a regular school day, again, depending on the ages as well or grade levels. So that's certainly something that is open, but I do believe it will be more of a treat. For example, sometimes we have students that are on field trips, and so I may have more staffing that stay behind in the building that can help with a walk like that. We're excited to be able to do that on great weather days. I just can't guarantee that it would be on a regular basis.
Any other questions?
I had a comment. I think that it's when people have an opportunity to go to the school, that will help them. I've been in that building, and it's much bigger than what you might imagine when you look at it from the outside, when you look at it from the street. That basement space doesn't feel like a basement, because as you saw in the pictures, there's a light. So I think that when people see it, it was designed for school. So we're lucky that that space is available to them.
Absolutely. And I will say, even bringing the staff that have gone so far to look, they've all pretty much said the same thing. So I think it was all very much a, ooh, oh, okay. So that certainly has helped my journey with this move, definitely.
Any other questions? Okay. Ms. Canonis, thank you very much for the presentation. And as you mentioned, there's going to be opportunities for the public to come and tour the building in the, probably later in the spring, before, you know, around the end of the school year, or as we get things set up. So, and so people will have that opportunity to see what they're walking into. But, you know, and it will be one year. We will, we will make the best. It'll be a fantastic experience. No doubt the kids will be talking about it, you know, years from now.
Yeah. And like I remind my staff always, students take the lead from you. So we share and show positivity and what we can do and what we can learn from this, and they will be successful. So I am excited for the journey. But thank you, and thank you for letting me present.
Absolutely.
I'm just wondering, do you think that there's going to be an increased reliance on
on computers and virtual learning models in the new building? Because maybe, you know, of space considerations or other, other challenges? I mean, it seems like you guys have really thought through a lot of things and are, you know, really trying hard and doing a great job and I love the excitement. I'm just wondering, you know, what, what will be different in, in this new space compared to what students and parents are used to?
I think what you're going to see is more hands-on from teachers as a team. Not that they're not hands-on now because they are, but it's working with that partnership. It's really building those relationships. So no, I don't think you'll see more virtual, I think you may see different virtual because teachers bring other ideas. Again, I'm very, very excited because I do have some that, team teaching wise, are in a really good place. This really again, takes everyone out of their comfort zone, but I think does build on an excellent skill pool teaching that I do hope to bring back to when LPS returns to that location, whatever we may be called. It is excellent teaching practice. So I think you will see that teachers are much more vested with that bigger group of students. Instead of I'm here as a specialized teacher and I'm pulling five students for a service, you're going to see that embedded into the classroom, which all students will benefit from. So that's what I'm excited about.
Just, I'd like to say two things. Parents will be sending this out, I'll send this out tomorrow morning, the slide deck, and then we'll continue to remind you about the March 15th and then the other opportunities we'll have via virtual for you to ask questions or anything else, we can dig a little bit more into the weeds on this. And then the last thing I just want to do is thank Wanda because I've really wondered over the last four months whether she teaches, or she works at LPS or at St. John's because she's back and forth so much and has been there so much just to prepare for this. And Andrew as well, next to me, who's been doing a lot of the logistical, getting everything ready for the move, tons and tons of hours have gone into this. I think it shows, we'll continue to fine tune it. And as one of the slides, I know we went through it pretty quickly, we're open to ideas, right? So if parents have ideas about different things or recess or things along those lines, reach out to Wanda, we know we have a lot of creative minds in this district. And if anyone has anything they want to offer, they think would be really cool for our kids to do, feel free to share that idea so we can see if we can put it in place. So again, thank you, Wanda.
Absolutely, and thank you to the teachers, I couldn't do it without them, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we will now, Gwen, thank you for your patience. And we'll start with the board ethics presentation.
All right, Gwen, you're on, finally, sorry about that. There you go. Yes, you should, you should have permission to share the screen, go ahead, see if you can do it.
Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Perfect, perfect, perfect. I can't see any of you, so I apologize for that, but thank you for the opportunity to be able to do this remotely. Not separate and apart from the weather, I truly do appreciate it. So this constitutes, and I've done it before in your district, your annual ethics training. And this is informational, obviously your board attorney is the ultimate arbiter of all things regarding, regarding your service. But we wanted to talk to you about the importance of the COVID ethics and making sure that as a school official, you understand what those responsibilities are under COVID ethics. And really, it's essential to the conduct of local boards to maintain and hold the respect and confidence of your community. And by avoiding conduct, which is a violation of the COVID trust, or creates that justified oppression or perception on the public that such trust could be violated. So the COVID ethics ensures that that does not happen. Permission applied to all school officials around conflicts of interest, your financial disclosure forms, which most of you probably already received. You have until April 30th to complete those. If you're a new board member, you have 30 days from the time you were sworn in to complete that. So you should have done that, I'll read it. And then COVID ethics and the mandatory training requirements apply only to board of education members and charter school trustees. So the School Ethics Act established the SEC, the School Ethics Commission. All the pieces around conflict of interest, the mandatory training requirements and the disclosure forms. Who enforces the act? There is the School Ethics Commission, which is composed of nine members, five non-school officials, two school administrators and two board members. There can't be more than five from one political party. With the notion that school board elections are nonpartisan, the School Ethics Commission needs to be nonpartisan as well. They have two different pieces to their jurisdiction. They issue both advisory opinions on a prospective basis. If you as a board member feel that there might be a potential conflict around a vote that you're going to be taking on a particular subject, then you can write to the Ethics Commission and request an advisory opinion. Additionally, they adjudicate ethics complaints that may be filed by anyone who alleges that a board member has violated the school COVID ethics. In a given year, just on average, there are about 85 complaints filed and 35 advisory opinions requested. Advisory opinions are generally private. In other words, if you write to them and ask for their opinion prior to a prospective basis voting on a particular issue, they will write you back to you. If they believe this Ethics Commission that it has sent widespread application to all board of education members, they will make their advisory opinion public. They will remove any identified factors, the school district or name or any of that, but make them public. And there's an expectation from the SEC that when they do make advisory opinions public, that board members will be aware of them. We routinely report those school board notes back. There were just several that were just released last week after their February meeting, a couple of which have widespread application and so have become public advisory opinions. And we'll talk about those in a few minutes. So what are the penalties if there's violation of the act? The School Ethics Commission recommends to the commissioner, whether they believe that the violation requires or would be just deserted by reprimand, which is simply reviewed by the commissioner. A censure, which is a little more serious, it's a formal disapproval. And the censure notice has to be read at a public board meeting and then adopted by the board as a resolution. Suspension, which is exactly what it sounds like, you are engaging in activities for a specific period of time. And then removal is termination of board membership or employment if you were an administrator. This notation here is updated from those definitions under Chapter 28 regulations. We created this presentation in December. In January, they finally affirmed the regulations, so we need to delete that. These are the new definitions around those terms as propagated in their new regulations. Okay? What's the SEC meant to recommendations to the commissioner? The commissioner issues a final decision and that is what is sent to the board of education member who has violated a piece of the COVID ethics. If a board member wishes to appeal it, it is spurred by the independent division of the New Jersey court system. Mandatory training, I'm not going to spend any time on this particularly. For those of you who may be new board members, you have to attend to board member orientation. You're required to do training in year two of your first term and year three of your first term. And then any board member who's re-elected to any term subsequent to their first is required to attend GAF4, which is generally around the middle of days. We provide this training both in person, online virtual, which is sort of a hybrid model, as well as a self-based online course as well. The disclosure statements, again, if you're a brand new board of education member, you have 30 days from the start of your service, from the start of your employment, to complete those forms. If you're a seated board member, every year you have to complete this by April the 30th. You receive notification through your email address, the school district. It can be done online and submitted that way. It's much easier. For us, as a board of education member, we have two copies, both in original signatures. So it has become much simpler to do that. There is now, in the new regulations, they have decided that they have laid out for those folks who find themselves out of compliance in terms of mandatory training for those who have failed to complete it in the time allotted. Then there is just cause if you send a show order letter. Again, you can be censured, suspended or removed depending on where you are in that timeline if you have failed to do your mandatory training. This is the actual COVID ethics and these are the pieces to the code. The first being upholding and enforcing all laws, regulations, the state board and board orders pertaining to schools. Desired changes shall be brought about with legal and ethical procedures. In other words, if you were to elect a violation of this, you have to include a copy of the final decision from a court of law or an administrative agency in the state demonstrating that the respondent failed to enforce all laws, rules, regulations of the state board of education. I would point out that the Department of Education is an administrative agency. And so we need to make sure that you are upholding all of those responsibilities. You're required to make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of all students and seek to develop and maintain the public schools that will meet individual needs, all children, regardless of their abilities, race, creed, sex or social standing. And so that is a very important piece to always keep in mind as you're making more decisions, that your decisions need to be based on what is best for all students, not a particular group of students. You're required to define your board making to policymaking, your board action to policymaking, plan and appraisal, and will frame policies and plans, but only after the board has consulted those who are affected by them. So you are by definition a policymaking body. Oftentimes, those folks who will be impacted by policy will be, have input through the administrative process or through teachers, through the principals, through supervisors and the like. And again, you know, you're going to develop those policies and principles that guide the management of the district. And then making sure that you have looked at and evaluated in your policies as you have implemented them, to make sure that A, they're implementing the fidelity, but more importantly, that they're acting in the manner in which you intended them to. You're responsible for carrying out your responsibilities, not administer the schools, but together with your fellow board members to see that they are well running. The board of education is not there to run the day-to-day operations of the school district and also to recognize that you only have authority when you work collaboratively with your colleagues and make decisions by majority. And so you want to make sure that you are not calling yourself on a day-to-day basis with the school, with the staff, or were trying to micromanage the school district. Recognizing that authority rests with the full board, make no personal promises or take any private action that may compromise the board. While all of you are volunteers and are people of good will and would love to solve everyone's problems that come to you, parents, community members with a concern, your role is not that of problem solver. You can provide information to your community, to parents, to your system and accessing the system, knowing where to go, who to speak to, if they have a concern or an issue that they need resolved. But you do not have the authority to resolve those issues or to, to change anything significant in terms of an individual student's life, in terms of a staff member's concern. Everyone that's in the school district, with the exception of the students, has a voice. The voters through the vote, the association through their staff members, through their associations, parents through voting, through coming to the podium, which we heard. You are the voice of the students, so it's really important that you understand that you don't have a role in solving those problems. Okay? Refusing to surrender your judgment to special interests or partisan political groups or using the schools for personal gain or the gain of your friends. And again, board of education are nonpartisan. They are not involved with political groups. And also you should make sure that you retain that independence of judgment and make your decisions in the best interest of all students and not just a particular group of students. You're required to hold confidential all methods which it explores with legally injured individuals or the school district. Making sure you provide accurate information in, in contact with your colleagues and interpret to the staff the aspirations of the community for its schools. Again, you must make sure that you maintain anything that's discussed in a secondary session until such point as the need for confidentiality in the long run exists. You have a policy by which executives' minutes are made public on set needing for confidentiality access. There are some, of course, items that will never be made public. Student information, staff information, employees' information. That will be held in confidence forever. And when we say in confidence, that means it does not get discussed with your spouse or your significant other. You must only hold that material to your colleagues on the board. You're required to vote to appoint the best qualified personnel after the consideration of the recommendation from your superintendent. You are not permitted to employ anyone without the affirmative recommendation of the superintendent. That does not mean that you cannot vote no, as long as you have a reason that is based in fact and that it's not considered by law to be COVID arbitrary or capricious. So again, you know, the board's role in personnel is rather limited. But again, you must also give due consideration to the recommendation of your superintendent. You're required to support and protect school personnel in the progress of their duties. You don't want to undermine or oppose or harm school personnel in the course of their duties. And again, you know, sometimes the day before you became a board member, it might have been all right to sit on the sidelines at the soccer game and complain about your coach. But once you have become a board of education member, you know, the rules change. So again, you know, if you have a concern, you have one employee, by definition, that's your superintendent. If you have a concern with something in the school district, you would let your board president know as well as the superintendent. You're required to refer all complaints to your superintendent and act on place at public meetings, only after the failure of administrative solution. Again, board members are not to be investigating and conducting an investigation. If you hear of an inquiry or you hear something that needs looked into, again, you must refer it to your superintendent and you have to wait for this public meeting after the failure of administrative solution. And that doesn't mean because people aren't satisfied with the solution that it's a failure. Sometimes people want the answer they want, but it's not indicative of an administrative failure. Whoops, I apologize. Went the wrong way. So those are the tenets of the COVID ethics. In addition to that, there's the conflict of interest piece that is included in the ethics law. And you must not participate in vote or discuss interest where you have a business interest or professional activity that's a potential conflict. You can't use your board seat to secure unwanted privileges, advantages in employment for others. If you have any kind of financial involvement that could impair your objectivity, take any gift or favor that is offered with a intent to influence. And again, you know, you should not represent any person or party other than the board of district matter or the board. And it is not a conflict in approving a greater grand gain than any others. Oftentimes I've asked, well, I have a child that's, you know, a fourth grader and they're taking a field trip and I vote to approve that field trip. Yes, because the entire fourth grader's showing there's a benefit to your family member that is greater than the benefit that approves to every fourth grader. So that is really the measure, do you have a greater gain than anyone else would have if they participated? If you think you have a conflict of interest, you should not participate in the discussion. If you think you have a conflict of interest, you should not participate in the discussion and/or should you vote on a particular item if you think you have a conflict. If you're concerned about a conflict and you know that it's coming before the board, you can always ask for an advisory opinion, or you can ask to have a check with your board attorney, who can give you his or her opinion as to the potential conflict prior to being involved in it. So who this is applied to? Well, an immediate family member is now defined if your spouse, a union partner, domestic partner, or dependent child residing in the same household. If it's a dependent child, then the dependent child is defined as a child, they have depended on your federal or state tax returns. The definition of a relative now includes all of these folks. I'm not going to read them all to you. It's probably everyone you're related to, maybe some folks you don't even know you're related to, but they have expanded it greatly. It is a definition that has been operable under the nepotism law for a very long time. It is only this past year that they have formally expanded this definition under the ethics law, which is what Chapter 28 regulations, you know, these definitions have been adopted. You may not hire the relative of a board member or chief school administrator. If you already have a relative that works in the district, again, an administrator may not exercise direct or indirect authority over the relative of the administrator. Board member, if you have a family member employed in any capacity in the school district, may not take part in employment matters concerning your superintendent or supervisors in the chain of command between the relative and the CSA. You cannot participate in a search, selection, vote to hire, vote to renew, or post hire regulations, contract discussions with your superintendent. No discussion, no vote, no taking part in any piece of that. In terms of collective bargaining with your district bargaining units, this is a chart to help you figure out if you're conflicted or not. And again, one of the things we suggest is if you're beginning negotiations and you think you might have a conflict, it always stays to wire with your board attorney to ensure that you're not stepping over the line. So if it's you, your spouse, or your child, but not a dependent, or a relative, and they work in the district, you're completely out of negotiations and voting on a conflict. If it's yourself, your spouse, or dependent child who works out of district in another school district, you can't participate in negotiations through the act of contract, but you can vote on the final contract, assuming that you have a memorandum of agreement, all the salary credits and the total compensation package has been costed out. And absent another conflict. And they have defined another conflict in that circumstance to me if your relative is a building representative for the association, if they're an officer for the association in the district where they work, or if they are on the negotiations team of the district where they work, that would be another conflict. And then you would not be able to participate. Other possible conflicts, you have to be careful that you're not engaging, even if they're not in the bargaining unit, but in terms of employment, they are linked to the bargaining unit, if they're supervised by employees in a unit, and if an immediate family member has a significant union involved. It used to be, when I sat on my Board of Education, that the candidate was endorsed by a local statewide union, it created an automatic conflict. That is no longer the case. They have changed that. It doesn't automatically create a conflict unless a financial contribution is given and is intended to influence that member, then it would conflict you out of participating in negotiations with that bargaining unit. So when the SEC looks at filings that are charged, that are brought against a board member by someone, and again, anyone can file a complaint against a board member, the question before the SEC is whether there are sufficient facts that, if found to be true, could support a filing that there was violation. And the Commission really wants to remind all of us, the public, that it is not an medium through which an debtless, foreign, or residence or salary break is to be filed, complaints designed solely to settle a score, unnecessarily delaying the process for folks which might have concerning behavior and conduct that might actually violate the head. And so there is a provision within the law that if someone files a frivolous claim against a board member, they can be fined up to five hundred dollars. And the SEC has done that periodically when they have found that folks have filed a Buddhist stance to a frivolous complaint either prior to an election or during the election season, or just to get even with someone. There were a number of decisions related to the Code of Ethics in 2022. And again, you know, I would like to send you this PowerPoint, and so that you will all have a copy of it, and you can read all of these cases. But essentially, you know, a board member at a PTA meeting shared confidential information to the public that had the potential to compromise the superintendent's or who was going on in the district, as well as making a valiant statement against the acting superintendent. Again, this person was reprimanded for that behavior. A board member, you know, the coach was superintendent looking for an explanation on some football players from Neil Knelt during the National Anika. The superintendent clarified, the player's right, not conduct violation, but the board member was given about his position, and he actually reminded the superintendent that the Board of Education was so lost, even though he was just one individual. And he conducted an investigation about all of this before any administrative action was taken. In that case, the Board of Education member was centered toward that behavior. Again, remember that you were just one Board of Education member, and no individual board member has the authority to direct your chief school administrator to act, only a majority of the full board has that authority. A teacher in a district commented during COVID-related concerns with returning to work by this week. A board member forwarded to the superintendent screenshots of the teacher who was vacationing in Antonia. Don't we wish we were all there to make this little bit of snow, including all concerns? And so the parent sent the same screenshots to the board member, the board member responded to the parent, expressing misviews on the matter, and that he expected the administration to provide an appropriate response to the parent. Again, even the board member's response to the parent potentially compromised the board by expressing right in his opinion on a matter that was still pending in administrative investigation, and it was conduct that was not appropriate. The member by responding to the parent email acted on the claim other than at a public board meeting prior to the failure of an administrative solution. Again, this individual was reprimanded at that, compared to that. There are some decisions that occurred during 2022, again, related to social media, which has really become a major concern at this School Ethics Commission, where a board member shared posts a news article on his personal Facebook page related to the Muslim faith and culture that were described by board attorneys as racist, sedentary, and offensive. And so it received national attention, including numerous calls to board staff and many members of the public, including the governor requesting this member resign from the board. Again, he was found to have violated, essential was recommended, the board member was now running for reelection, and it was not adjudicated until after he had left. But that is a problem on social media. Again, related to conflicts of interest, two board members voted against, voted on a settlement agreement, voted in favor of it. As part of that settlement agreement, the members were having their individual lawsuits filed against them by the superintendent, who was outgoing dismissed. So it appeared to the public that they benefited to a greater degree than the rest of the board by voting for something that would reduce their legal exposure. And they were recommended for that. A board member failed to recuse herself in executive session where they were discussing attorney fees, and again, the board member had a conflict of interest in this particular matter, which he was asked to provide evidence. And so even though there was no vote that was taken, even though it was only the costs that was being discussed, it created the justifiable impression of the public that their trust was being violated, since all of that had become public. A board member's daughter worked as a pergium substitute for the district, which is permitted by the exemption in the district's nepotism policy, but the board member voted to approve a payment bonus for the superintendent. And again, since she had a family member employed as a pergium substitute, she should not have been participating in approving merit goals for the superintendent. A candidate for the board filed an Oprah lawsuit of the Public Records Act against the board regarding email settings. The board vice president was not named in the suit, but was asked to produce certification and testing to the way the board members' emails were accessed. Again, you know, it's a conflict, and so a public hearing, you know, needed to be held. All of these things just give you a pause, and you need to make sure that you are being aware of the laws at all times and what your participation is. Here are some public advisory opinions that were released. One was a request by a bus driver who was not a member of the local NJPA in the district where he was driving the bus. He wanted to know if he could participate in negotiations as a board member, if the district's association is also affiliated with the NJPA. And the answer was no, since both associations are affiliated with NJPA, the member is precluded from being involved in all aspects of negotiations. They can vote on it in contract, absent another conflict, but they couldn't do the actual negotiations. Board members voted on merit goals. Two members were conflicted out, but they went ahead and they approved these votes, even though the superintendent had resigned, and their rationale was he was no longer an employee. They were found to be in conflict because despite the fact that he no longer worked in the district, they were not eligible to participate in that by the mistake of their family members working in the district. A board member whose ex-spouse works in the district, and they had a custody child spousal support agreement, the ex-spouse is not considered a relative or an immediate family member. Is the board member conflicted from matters regarding the superintendent and other administrators in the chain of command? And the answer is yes. It could be perceived that because he has indirect financial or personal involvement, meaning child support, spousal support, it may impact his objectivity. So sometimes there are folks that the SEC holds to be others because of their relationships that are not embodied in the definition of the relatives. On the other hand, if board members can't involve a spouse of a spouse's local and another board member's distant cousin worked in the district, could they participate in labor relations and matters related to the superintendent? And the answer is there's not an automatic conflict. Absent other conflicts, these members can participate because the relatives were so There were four different opinions regarding worker volunteering in organizations, and again, I will send you these, I'm not going to take time tonight to go through all of these, because most of these are so individual board member specific that they don't have widespread application. But again, you know, it is important that you are aware of them. The School Ethics Commission has also provided guidance to board members around volunteering in the schools. And the SEC does not prevent board members from volunteering in the schools. However, because of your role, executive role, the amount of volunteering and how you volunteer really depends upon the degree of involvement, students and staff, meaning frequency and the level of involvement with your staff, the degree of authority to give and receive directions or orders to students and staff. Again, you know, anything where you're going to be routinely viewed as being enmeshed in a school building is going to be problematic. If staff is going to be giving you direction, or you're giving directions, taking orders from staff, that's problematic. Avoiding handling any of the school district's lobbies is also a piece that you would suggest be avoided, if you don't want to be doing that. And again, any kind of regular, recurrent leading or volunteering as a coach, or a club, or activity, or sport is not able to be done as a Board of Education member. And this comes from the School Ethics Commission. I just really wanted to make that clear. This is not New Jersey School Boards Association sending these guidelines for the Code of Ethics. These are all pieces that come from the state. We recommend that if you want to volunteer in the school district, that we certainly it's something I did as a board member routinely, advise the superintendent of what, when, and how you're going to be volunteering, refrain from any related court discussion or voting, talking about how you voted, and always being cognizant of the obligations that they act. And so you need to just be aware of that. They've also weighed in around board members' involvement in personnel. And again, board member involvement in interview propositions other than the superintendent is not encouraged. However, should your superintendent decide to include other stakeholders in the interview process, and the superintendent would like, excuse me, the board members to participate, no more than one or two board members would be permitted. It has to be coordinated, no receipt by the administrator, and your participation will be limited to observations and overall assessment. But the final recommendations are wholly within the purview of the superintendent, and that's an important piece to remember as you move forward. Probably the largest issue that this School Ethics Commission has been dealing with of recent years, again, is the growth of social media. And so, you know, a school official does not automatically lose your right to First Amendment free speech, but you must be mindful of the perception of others, as well as the boundaries around your limitations as a publicly elected or appointed official. And the SEC wants you to consider whether a reasonable member of the public perceives that you, as a board member, are speaking in your official capacity pursuant to your official duties. So it's always the balance between the right of free speech and the boundaries around, or the parameters around the Code of Ethics itself, to make sure that you are not overstepping. And so they have actually taken the step to require that any board member, really, if you're going to post, and it's in any medium, it's not just social media, if you're going to write a letter to the editor, to a newspaper, or an opinion post, then you must include a disclaimer. Statements are made in my capacity as a private citizen and not my capacity as a Board of Education member. These statements are also not represented by the board and its individual members and solely represent my personal opinions. It must be very clear and unambiguous that this is your opinion. We suggest that board members use that disclaimer on any kind of social media or any kind of public statement and platform that they engage in, whether it's on radio, or television, or on social media, or in a letter to the editor, as a way of making sure that you are clear that you are speaking solely for yourself. However, keeping in mind, because the SEC has gone further and said, even if you use that disclaimer, if the substance of your poster statement can render the disclaimer meaningless... meaningless, because by virtue of the statement you discuss additional board business and board materials such that the public cannot discern that you're speaking for yourself, you could still have a problem. Content matters. Okay? So while the SEC may not have the ability to sanction derogatory speech, the voting members of the public have the power to choose who they feel is most fit to serve, and that's something to remember. Okay? So in this particular case, oh, it goes back to 2020. We've highlighted it because we really believe that it says it very well, that public words which derogate from the mission of a board of education serve no purpose, create unnecessary hostility and animosity from the community, and ultimately have the greatest detrimental effect on the very people that the respondent is tasked to serve, the students. So while they acknowledge the sanctity of the First Amendment, words that deliberately cause divisiveness should have no place in an educational setting. And that's an important piece to remember. Sometimes it's difficult in these times to remember this, but it really is very helpful to keep that in mind. These most, this is a most recent social media advisory opinion that just came out. They just had a meeting February 21st. This was just published. I threw this by you here today because I think it is informative and helpful. The question was, could a board member be found to violate from voting to not implement the New Jersey Student Learning Standards on HPE and voting for opt-in as opposed to statutorily authorized opt-out? And this was under, again, letter A of the Code of Ethics, which, as you recall, say that the board is responsible for holding and enforcing all of the laws of the state Board of Education, the state of New Jersey, the federal government. Okay? However, if requires a final decision from a court of law or administrative agency of the state show that the board official had acted contrary to the laws, rules, and regulations promulgated by the state, that is not as of now. Towards the end, they say, this is, you know, has clear and unequivocal obligation to ensure that the curriculum instructional programs are designed and delivered in a way that all students can demonstrate their knowledge and skills specified in the New Jersey Student Learning Standards. This obligation is not waivable, and there are consequences for not compliance, including through NJU7. And what's interesting is they finish with saying that if the board ultimately refuses to implement the New Jersey Student Learning Standards, or change the application of the statutory language from opt-out to opt-in, the board as a public body would be violating educational laws and regulations, and ramifications could follow. So while you as an individual could vote no, if the board in its totality refused implementation, the entire board would be subject to ramifications for violating the laws. And again, this was decided on November 25th, only published this just last week, because you need six members to be present at meetings of the school ethics commission that published an advisory opinion. But this, I think, speaks to the concerns that the school ethics commission has around the proliferation of board member comments on social media. Okay? So again, it doesn't matter what media or platform, whether it's Twitter, or Facebook, a letter to the editor, a podcast, any of those things, make sure you use the required disclaimer. Ensure that your speech meets all the requirements of the Code of Ethics. And just keep in mind, you know, ultimately, you should ask yourself whether it would deliberately cause divisiveness or derogate from the mission of your board of education in your school district. Okay? So just to conclude, the board wishes to make clear, the commission wants to be clear that all board members should be treated, should always treat each other members of the board with decency, respect, and kindness. You have a really important job. It's totally unrealistic to think you're always going to agree on every issue that you may encounter, but this can be done to civility and appreciation and respect for the thoughts and opinions of others. And again, this comes directly from one of their decisions that they have made. So are there any questions on the Code of Ethics? Since I can't see any of you.
Does anybody have any questions? Okay, good. Gwen, I think we're, I think we're good. No questions.
Okay, I'm gonna stop sharing temporarily.
Yeah, Gwen, as you, as you queue up the next presentation, I just want to, Gwen's not done yet. She's got one more. So this is a really important time in a process. We are going to be embarking on our strategic planning process. So those of you who aren't familiar, our strategic plan actually expired in June of 21. So the goal will be to set out a new plan, hopefully a five-year plan. So Gwen's gonna share a lot of information now just about what that process is gonna look like. It will be facilitated by New Jersey School Boards, and we will be having three meetings in the spring, which I'll talk about when Gwen's done, and then I have a lot of information going out to parents tomorrow morning about. And we're hoping to get as many community members as we can involved in the strategic planning process. So Gwen, they're all yours.
Okay, well, thank you. And I know that this couple of you were either on the board or attended some of the last meetings for strategic planning that we did in the district, and I look forward to having you participate as we move forward again. The purpose of strategic planning really is to just create an ongoing, such a wide vision, a vision to motivate and inspire our members of the community to work together for the common good. Sometimes it's about long-range planning, hopefully it's a little more focused on that, but it's really a proactive way to involve your community. It's creative, it engages in a planning process that's flexible, and again, it provides a forum for participation in a complete cross-section of your community. And so we would encourage you as board members to go out and talk about these meetings that are coming up. Encourage community members and citizens to become involved, as well as students. You know, students are the ultimate consumers of what it is we do in your district, or what you do in your district. And having their perspective is valuable. And it really does sort of create an ongoing cycle of planning, assessment, and decision-making. It ensures that you're getting optimum use of your limited resources. There is never enough resources for all the good kinds of things that every school district wants to do for their students. But making sure that you are optimizing those through effective planning is critically important. It increases communication. One of the unintended consequences really in strategic planning is the opportunity for your community members to meet members of your staff, other community members that they might not ordinarily interact with, and learn from one another things that they just didn't know about the educational process in South Hundred. You know, if you only have an elementary student, you may have little knowledge of what was on at the middle or the high school level. You may have misunderstandings about some of those things. And so it's a wonderful opportunity for people to work together and talk and learn from each other. Okay? And it really highlights the importance of good decision-making and directing and inspiring both your staff and your community. So we encourage board members to do it. It's really entitled, you know, the three Rs. Reflect. Where are we today? Right? If we're gonna talk about where we want to be tomorrow, we have to talk about where we are today. So that first meeting is really around reflecting. Having your superintendent provide the state of the schools and community to all of the participants, so then it's a whole level set around the information so that we're all starting from the same page. And then reimagine it. You know, what is your mission for the future? What will South Hundred and Children's Schools look like in the next five years? What is important for students to know and be able to do in each of those grade levels as they move forward? What is important that they leave our district knowing and being able to do as they go out of the door to college, to career, to the military, to whatever it is that they're pursuing in their future? And how will we know we've accomplished that? Why do this? You know, school enrollments are changing. Oh, in Hunterdon County particularly, for example, we've seen declining enrollment for a number of reasons. But again, you know, in some, in some school districts, even in Hunterdon, enrollment is going up, not down. Making sure that your facilities can accommodate 21st century skills. Actual makeup of the curriculum is different today than it was five years ago or 10 years ago. And so making sure that you have adequate educational spaces and facilities for students to be able to do maker spaces or STEAM experiences. All of those things are important, and looking at those to make sure that you're thinking about them now, because those kinds of changes, as you know, take time to make. Again, you know, you may have increasing numbers of people in your community who don't have children in the schools. And so having them participate and understand the value of what it is that happens in your schools is really an important piece as well. Family structures are changing over time. The economics, we live in a very interesting time of economic change right now, and so that may have an impact on the school district. Educational levels in your community are changing. You know, a bachelor's degree is no longer considered a terminal degree. You know, in the 21st century, we need to ensure that students are able to go for higher levels of education beyond the bachelor's. You know, competition for your public schools, while charter schools have not made very inroads into Hunterdon County, we've also seen choice become potentially problematic for some school districts. And then of course, limited funding impacting your programs and services and your ability to offer more has become something that all districts are having to deal with at one point or another. And what does that look like? What are your community's priorities? What are your community's visions for their future? What is it they want to see the schools do and provide for their children as you move forward? So, you know, if any answer that any of those things are happening in your community that strategic planning is really something you may want to think about. There is a waterfall effect from all of this, because at the end of the three meetings will be a half-accomplished looking at your mission for the future, and then reimagining that future, what does that look like? What are the kinds of changes we need to make? And you will come away with goals and objectives that will take your district across the next five years. Those large goals and the objectives to achieve those goals will help you as a board in terms of setting your district goals, your board goals. They will flow down to your administrative, the building goals, to the department goals at the high school level, to the teachers in the elementary schools, to staff's SGOs, student growth objectives, to staff's professional development plans. All of these things will align to those broader goals and ultimately flow into community levels of student achievement rate and student learning, which is the whole purpose of education. Okay? So we have this pictorial representation of it. I call the three Rs, reflect, reimagine, and calibrate. The commitment of the sign is the commitment of your community to participate. That information we're going to share will be the state of the schools and community report that Anthony will be putting together for that very first meeting. The second meeting, we will work on identifying the strengths and challenges of your district. In order to address those challenges, we have to know what we do well. What are the strengths of the district? What are those challenges or opportunities that are out there so that we can leverage our strengths to address our challenges? What's our vision for the future? And from all of that work, we will then identify the goal areas and strategies. And then ultimately, the action plans will be written by the professional educators that will move the district closer to achieving those district goals. Okay? How can you participate as a board member? You can attend and actively participate in the three meetings. They're like once a month, but they might be slightly closer together than that. Becoming involved in your schools to the extent you are able, because sometimes we present this to community members as well. You of course are limited by your rules, board member, and those follow your activities. And, you know, attend board meetings, which we say to the public, so that they get your updates on the progress to have achieving your strategic planning goals and your annual district goals. Those are always when your community can engage with the district. And obviously, you know, one of the unintended outcomes, I think, to, to the pandemic was the grade level of public involvement by virtue of our meetings, which made them more accessible to folks. And so continuing to foster that engagement that we were fortunate to have as a result of that is something that strategic planning assists with. So it's a really dynamic process. Those of you who've engaged in it before, I think you came away appreciating it, and it does provide a roadmap for the future for your district. Questions?
Any questions for Gwen?
I do have one, actually. Gwen, I'm sorry, I'm gonna move back. Such a crick in my neck for trying to look at this thing sideways. Gwen, board members can participate in the strategic plan. We can have more than five participate in the strategic planning. Is that correct?
That is absolutely correct. You just have to advertise it as a board meeting strategic planning.
Okay.
And then if there's more, the role called is has to be taken, and there's no public comment, because the whole thing is public comment.
Right. Okay. And I think we did that the last time.
Yes, the answer, that was the long answer to your question, I'm sorry. The answer is yes, of course.
Perfect. Always appreciate the explanation. Thank you. Board members, any other questions about the strategic planning process? Okay.
All right, Gwen, thank you. Great job on both presentations.
All right, well, thank you for having me, and I look forward to seeing you all very soon in person.
All right. Take care, Gwen.
Thank you. Stay safe in the storm.
I bet it's, I bet it's a storm.
I'll move quickly, because I know that some pictures are sent, and it's getting, you know, some snow out there. But just the last thing I'll say quick about the strategic plan. Again, you're gonna get information tomorrow with the opportunity to sign up, to participate in hopefully all three, or if not, one or two of the evening presentations. The first one's gonna be on Tuesday, March 28th at 7:00 PM right in this room, and then we're gonna rotate between LPS and West Vanwell for the second and the third one. So hopefully folks will get involved. I'll jump, I promise, I only have five slides, and I'm gonna go through them real quick because I know your presentation's out. But just real quick, I wanted to give a quick update on school construction. If you're not aware, if you, you know, kind of have forgotten about this, we did have litigation still with the referendum after Judge O'Neill ruled his decision supporting the district last June. There was an appeal filed, believe it or not. It just went in front of the appellate, which was last Thursday. And if you're following along, I just wanted to kind of reaffirm that the district did win on every part of the appeal, and upheld the appellate division upheld the decision of lower court. So just in case you're following along, I wanted to just make everybody aware of that. Some exciting things with the construction. So everything has been out the bid since February 9th. We had pre-bid meetings last Tuesday to 21st, and based on that, we're hoping that we're probably gonna have seven contractors bid on the 588 building, and between 8 and 10, bid on the pre-K4 renovation. They were here, they were walking the site. We had a lot of folks at LPS walking that site inside and out, taking a look at it. So that was exciting. The bid opening for the 588 building will take place on March 15th at 2:00 PM, and then the bid opening for the pre-K4 building will take place the following day at 2:00 PM. We actually did stagger the bid openings, because a couple of the contractors had said, if I don't, if I'm not successful on the 588, I may want to bid on the pre-K4, but since you're opening on both at the same time, that precludes me from doing that. Would you think about maybe staggering them? Which in theory could help us with pricing, because if they don't get the 588 and they need work, they're gonna put in a real strong bid on the pre-K4. So we decided to do that. And then finally, the big announcement tonight, hopefully folks are tuning in at home. If you remember, we did a lot of work, got a lot of community response, narrowed it down to five combinations on possible names, and the winner is, the students have spoken. The names of our schools will be the South Hundred and Regional Elementary School and the South Hundred and Regional Middle School, and you can see from the responses kind of where we landed. The board felt very strongly that they wanted to support what our students wanted. So we are officially moving into a new era with new names. So we are officially moving into a new era with new names. So I wanted to share that information this evening, and I'll share it out with the public tomorrow morning. All right, back to the agenda.
Okay. So that, this is the time for public comment. Members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter for a maximum of three minutes. If you, if anyone has a comment, please come to the podium, tell us your name and the municipality where you live, and have at. Does anyone have anything they would like to bring before the board? Seeing no movement out in the audience, I will close the period of public comment and we'll move on to buildings, grounds, and transportation. Diana?
Sure. Try to make it short. So we met on Thursday, the 23rd. A couple of things to note. We talked about the budget as we do every meeting. We just finished up our budget work session, as we know, which was a great opportunity for everyone to learn about the budget and the process. We're anxiously awaiting the governor's address, I think it's tomorrow, to see what our state aid numbers are. So that is, hopefully we'll get good news with that. In the agenda, you'll see we are approving a lease purchase agreement for around $230,000. That does include a new school bus. Prices have gone up like everything, so the school bus is, of course, much higher this year than it was last year. It also includes our LED lighting upgrade, which is around $87,000. But after rebates and our savings over the year, it should be a neutral. We should be getting back the money that we're putting into it. We are continuing to gain interest on our referendum funds that are being invested. We gained another $280,000 in the past since the last meeting. We are also approving joining a national co-op purchasing alliance, and that will be used for technology and furniture purchases for the new 588 building. And then lastly, hopefully, by the next meeting, we have positive news about this, but Stockton Transfer, we're expecting the ruling on March 17th. And shortly after that, the title should be able to be transferred to Stockton Borough. So with that, I'd like to move items A through L.
Thank you, Diana. Can I have a second, please? Thank you, Sean. Any discussion on items A through L? If there's no discussion, then let's vote.
Shetty?
Yes.
Brian Keyes?
Yes.
Kevin Kowalewski?
Yes.
Sorry, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
I couldn't hear from you.
Trace Petrucci?
Yeah.
Diana Frisell?
Yes.
Megan Warner?
Yes.
Ronnie Todd Moreno?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Kowalewski, do you have any kind of report for personnel? Or you want to make one? Oh, Megan, I'm so sorry. Bye.
I'm not chairman.
There it is. Duh.
If you want to go, Kevin, by all means.
No, Megan, you're here. Do it up.
Yeah, everybody, everybody gets a $10,000 raise.
All right, silent mute. Put in one.
We have the acceptance of the retirement. We have a couple appointments and adjustments of our busing schedule. And then we also had some approvals for our extracurricular appointments, including a lot of our spring sports, softball, baseball, track, golf. So with that, I'll move items A and...
So moved. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Tracy. Any discussion on items A and B? If there is no discussion, then let's vote.
Brian Keyes?
Yes.
Kevin Kowalewski?
Yes.
Tom Lewis?
Yes.
Trace Petrucci?
Yeah.
Diana Frisell?
Yes.
Megan Warner?
Yes.
Gina Pachetti?
Yes.
Ronnie Todd Moreno?
Yes.
Jim Gallagher?
Yes. Ms. Petrucci, curriculum update?
Yeah. Luckily, most of what I was going to cover has been covered this evening in some way, shape, or form. Ms. Conon has brought over the LPS location, which presents to all of you next month. We're also going to get the update from Mrs. Knight on the scheduling. We did talk a little bit about the music tech class, some of the needs in terms of the technology needs there, which was brought up in last month's curriculum discussion. But we had some visible ones that puts, you know, what the goals were for that. And then finally, there's a program plan for the week before spring break, which is something interesting from the team. And then also, this is what we already brought up, the meeting with LAF to kind of join together with, with the district to kind of align and discuss so that we're, so that we're working closely together to come up with the best, you know, opportunities for the district. I don't have anything to approve.
Very good. Well, you can roll right into policy.
So for policy, we are, I always start with the second reading just because that's something that would be worth a look at. Just, just as a reminder, we did, I don't have some stuff in the audience, the athletic competition was revised and it is in the on for our second read as well as the, the other three, which I think were mostly minor. In terms of the first read, there was the need to go into, you know, looking at the athletic, we needed to look at all of the co-curricular activities to align those two policies based on some of the changes. And then there's also for first read, student use of vehicles. This is just about students driving themselves and the, and the alliance there. And that's in first read right now, so just refer to all of you to take a look at those two and certainly make any suggestions or comments or otherwise what 20 or I know and we will go forward for next. Okay, so for, just want to move item A.
Okay, so moved. Need a second?
Second.
Second, Diana. We're running. It's like a close thing. Any discussion on the new policies? If no discussion, then let's vote.
Kevin Kowalewski?
Yes.
Tom Lewis?
Yes.
Trace Petrucci?
Yeah.
Diana Frisell?
Yes.
Megan Warner?
Yes.
Gina Pachetti?
Yes.
Brian Keyes?
Yes.
Ronnie Todd Moreno?
Yes.
Jim Gallagher?
Yes. Ms. Todd Moreno, school and community report?
Right, yes, mine. Also, many of the topics were covered already, so I will do a quick highlight. The school name was announced. And one thing, just to remind folks that after the bidding process, when we select a contractor, there will be a series of town hall type meetings that will include the contractor and the construction manager. So that'll be a time when people can have their questions answered or, and learn more about the timeline. We have a listserv that is being promoted. At the time of the meeting, there were 37 people signed up, and that's something that's, that we want to make sure that neighbors in particular sign up to get those regular email updates. And Tony's going to use a Google form for questions, questions so that we can create an FAQ for the website. We talked about the strategic plan, and I think we're, we're trying to just identify people in the community that would be, that should be invited to that, although it is not invite only. People are, are able to come. We talked a little bit about budget questions. And one thing that was clarified is that the, that we have a lot of grants that we are applying to, to potentially fund the capital projects. But these projects, projects will still be listed on our budget and added to the master facilities plan. So that's important, that needs to happen, even if we do go for a grant and do ultimately receive that grant. And we talked about the transition to St. John and the challenge of, of outdoor play. And as Mrs. Conon and Tony said, you know, we're really just continuing to look at creative solutions to give that free play opportunity to kids, which is important. And then lastly, I'll talk about the district calendar because that is up for vote tonight. That's the only vote of school and community. So we, just as a follow-up, we talked about the half-days at the end of the year because that has come up as a question. And Tony clarified that the high school has finals that week, and then also the elementary teachers often use those afternoons to wrap up for the year. And we know that that's going to be especially important this year. And highlights on the, on the calendar, start of school will be after Labor Day again. And the staff in service will again be on November 1st, so the day after Halloween, school will be closed. So that's always a popular...
Especially in Lambeauville. Halloween capital of the world.
All right. So then I, we will be voting on the, on the district calendars.
So you'd like to make a motion to approve item B?
You made a motion?
No, you're making a motion.
I would like, yes, I would like to make a motion to approve.
Outstanding. So moved. May I have a second, please? Second, Gina, thank you very much. Any discussion on the calendar? We do have to roll call vote this, right? So let's make, let's vote.
Tom Lewis?
Yes.
Trace Petrucci?
Yeah.
Diana Frisell?
Yes.
Megan Warner?
Yes.
Gina Pachetti?
Yes.
Kevin Kowalewski?
Yes.
Ronnie Todd Moreno?
Yes.
Jim Gallagher?
Yes. Okay, we have one item under routine information items that needs to be voted on. That is the acceptance of the harassment, intimidation, and bullying report, which is the one that we went over last month in, in the executive session. So may I have a motion to? Thank you, Megan. And a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Diana. Any discussion on that report? In that case, we can always vote this. So all with favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Very good. And with that, it brings us to the second period of public comment for the evening. So again, I will open it up if there is anyone in the audience who has something they would like to bring before the board. Now is the time.
Hi, Jen Bachelor from West Danwell. I wanted to, something that came up at our, I guess in discussion at our last PTO meeting, and we talked a little bit about parent volunteers and being able to come into the building and chaperone things like school trips. And I was wondering if there's any particular board policy or anything like that that's documented with that, because it just seems like, you know, for West Danwell School in particular, I know when my kids started there, we were invited to come into the school and have lunch with the kids, and we had a lot of opportunities to come in. And I know that during COVID, there were restrictions in place and totally understand safety concerns and, you know, things going on, current events will always impact our decisions with that. But I feel that's something that's very deeply missed by a lot of parents, especially getting that opportunity to chaperone a trip with your little one, particularly, you know, when they're in kindergarten, first grade even. And then even as they get older, you, you still like to have those opportunities. And even like being on the PTO, you know, we get that email at the end of every year, like send in your pictures for the yearbook and like, I don't have any because I haven't been in school, I haven't been able to be there. So I'm just wondering, like, where do we fall with that now that COVID restrictions are lifted? Can we go back to the way we were? Is it building specific or if there's any kind of comment, like? Okay.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just say quickly, I mean, we're, we're open to that again. Obviously, we were on a delay for a while because of COVID, but just reach out to your principals, you know, and then, you know, whether it's PTA, PTO, organization, however, you know, obviously, we're, we're open to having volunteers in the building. I do have one for home.
Okay.
And it's just, it's actually from Mrs. Burkhead. She wanted to put a plug in for our annual family literacy night. So I'll just read it. It's up on the screen as well. The South Hurton Regional Education Association would like to extend an invitation to all South families to attend our annual family literacy night on March 29th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at LPS. We have lots of fun activities that help students see all the ways that literacy is everywhere around us. We'll also be giving away over 1,000 books. And we'll have an amazing local author in attendance for a presentation and book signing. We look forward to seeing you there.
Those are great events. They're a lot of fun. Yeah, I love that book. Quick, quick move. Cows of type, absolutely. Okay, with that, is there any other public comment? Well, before I close the period of public comment, does anyone else have anything they'd like to bring before the board? Seeing no activity in the public, I will close the period of public comment. And so we do need, we do have a need to go into a brief executive session, and we will try to keep it under 10 minutes. We will not be taking any action after this meeting, so we will just be coming back and adjourning. So please, I don't know what it's like outside, but drive home safely if you're going. So I do need a motion to go into executive session. Thank you, Megan. And a second from Tracy or Gina, I'm not sure. Okay, all in favor? We're going in. We'll be right back.